This conference will now be recorded.
It's Monday, July 29, 2024. Call a meeting to order. It's time is 9:08. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call?
Mr. Romero?
Present.
Present. Here.
Here. Present. Move to the Pledge and Allegiance. Commissioner Mascherinius.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures.
Thank you. We'll move to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of the agenda with one change, which is to remove, to move item seven, the consent agenda, before item six, resolutions and ordinances.
Remove item seven? Or which one?
Move it to become the new item six. So move it in front of resolutions and ordinances.
Okay. Do we have a motion by Commissioner Rush?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Mascherinius to approve the agenda with the movement, with moving item seven right after item five. Madam Clerk, could you call roll, please?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And so we will move to item six, public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment this morning? I see no one. So we'll move on to item seven, the consent agenda. And the first one is A, approval for out-of-state travel on actual reimbursement for Angel Gonzalez, Gabriela Perea Smith, and Felicia Sanchez to travel to Hershey, Pennsylvania to attend the EMS billing and EMS privacy classes on October 19th at 25. And is Mike Cordova here? Who is, or I guess, I guess we don't need to do that one. It's a consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like to remove?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Rahil, seconded by Commissioner Miguel Romero to approve the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And now we get back to item six. And here it's, first is item six A, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of resolution number 202423, a resolution approving the 2024 final quarter financial report year ending June 30, 2024. Emily, are you going to present on this?
Yeah, this is kind of challenging trying to.
Bring the microphone with you. Take care of it.
Oh, I feel like the singer. Wow. Okay, so this is a recap of our fourth quarter financials of where we ended up in the general fund. So our beginning cash at the beginning of the fiscal year 2324 was at 10 million. These are our budgeted income expenses and transfers. And this was what our projected ending cash balance looks like. Our actuals, we actually came in quite over and above in our revenues by 3 million. So in our expenses, we were under budget by 3 million. So there's kind of an offset there. And our transfers were over, creating an overage in the variance from the budget versus actual. So this is the total variance between budget versus actual. So what I had been able to determine in reviewing the actuals and the budget is we were over budgeted in some areas, way under budgeted in others. So the 23% increase in expenditures are based on actuals. So that's where we get that big jump because we weren't, I don't think, capturing our projected actuals as we should have. There were substantial budget that we were under in many areas. So this is a recap of all of the funds in the county. First page just covers general fund. Special revenue funds normally sustain themselves aside from public works and EMS and ADC. So those specific funds will always require transfers from the general fund to supplement their shortfall. So this is a lot of information here. But it shows our beginning cash, our revenues, our transfers, expenditures, expenditures, and ending cash. And these are all actuals. So you can see that our ending cash, we didn't have any deficit balances. And then this total. It's a lot of information.
Is that the same thing we've got on the email you submitted?
No, this was not provided in the email. And I'll print these out so you can have in your binders as well. So this was our ending cash balance, the 65 million plus sum. And this is what we report to the state.
Can we pause that? Do you mind? So that first column is what, 2024, right?
Yes, these are.
I'm just trying to get my bearings. Once I get my bearings, I'll reply. The 2020, beginning cash, which is 2023, 2024. Okay, revenue, transfers, expenditures.
Okay, just, yeah. So this is the beginning cash we brought in, the transfers in or out of the fund.
Right.
Then what was spent out of the fund and then ending cash balance. And Emily, we'll get there in a second, but this ending cash balance has to match the treasurer's reporting. And that does match.
But for example, the jail, we transferred out 2 million to be able to keep them going. That's what was required for us to.
Yes. The transfers were a bit over budgeted for the jail. So this year I didn't transfer as much. I believe the transfers are a little over 1.4.
Okay. And so the negatives, of course, that was, didn't, wait a minute. The negatives would be that you didn't transfer. I don't know, you did transfer, but.
These are transfers in and these are transfers out.
Thank you.
Sometimes they do net.
Okay.
So in the general fund, there's transfers in and there's transfers out. So those do net.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. And so as you can see, public works, we had 1.5 transferred from the general fund. Jail, 2.4.
So you knew exactly where to adjust those.
So stuff on EMS. Emily touched on it. I remember this was a meeting, but if we weren't giving money to the municipalities on the grocery steaks tax, we had probably net out on the EMS fire assistance fund.
Okay, yeah.
So which we probably said we're probably being in a deficit.
So how much do we have to put in?
So EMS, the budgeted transfers, oh, excuse me. How do I make that bigger?
Very touchy, huh?
I know. I know. I don't know how to. Oh, there we go. Okay, so what we put into EMS was.
You'll do it on this.
It's on the other side. Oh, gosh.
It's actually better, bigger. You have more experience on that.
Okay, so 509.
It's a 500 account.
Oh, 90,000, 55903. So. Right there. This year is going to look a lot different, and we can speak more into that when we get to the EMS budget. We had the county fire chiefs wages and benefits budgeted in the general fund. Things shifted over and we moved everything to EMS. So there's an even greater deficit balance this year that created a greater need for transfers. So again, that's a conversation that we can have when we get to the EMS budget for this year.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask, and Emily, could I just ask one question? Very general question, and we might not have an answer to it. Where, you said that we have 3 million and some over what we had anticipated or budgeted for. Do we have an idea of where that's coming from? Is that GRTs? Like, where did the extra money come from?
Again, I think that we under budgeted on our revenues.
Okay.
And that's where I believe the culprit is. We were, you know, did have quite a bit of money in GRTs and property taxes. We're not going to be seeing that this year, the bump that we had hoped. But I believe that that variance was due to under budgeting.
Okay, so it wasn't necessarily that we brought in more than in other years, although it sounds like we did. It was mostly that we kind of lowballed, if you will.
That's what it appears to me, and it's difficult for me to speak into this because I'm not aware of the history behind it. I haven't been with the county for full 12 months. So just looking at this, this is what I can gather that the issue was. And I did have that backed by our treasurer and Mr. Hieu that helped support with this upcoming budget, so.
And Paula Sanstevan as well? Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, and our treasurer also confirmed all of our cash balances to her reconciled statements as well. So this is true and accurate.
So Emily, on the first page, you had the cash balances. Could you go back to that and what the numbers were there?
Can you just arrow down?
Really? Now you're in.
Oh, I didn't even know that little.
Thank you. That is very helpful.
Okay, so the first one is 6 million. What is that number? I can't quite read it.
I'm sorry, the income?
Yeah, the budget, under the budget there.
Okay, so this first set of numbers is what we had budgeted. Cash is cash, so that doesn't really fall into budget. But our income is budgeted 18,603,507.60.
Okay, so the bottom is 6 million. 82584. And then what's the difference between that and actual then? The 13 million?
The 6 million.
But I mean, what it's, so what does that mean?
This is what we budgeted and this is what we netted.
Okay. So that's 6 million.
And we've said another, other than transferring more money out, like we've said, there's, we budgeted 18 million, we brought in 21, almost 22 million.
Okay.
We still managed expenses at 14 million, and we had budgeted 18. And then again, the transfers out, we had a million dollars more than we had budgeted. And so the end of it, we, our bottom line was 13 million dollars that we have with, as our cash balance. But that includes investments in there as well.
And at the end of fiscal year 2324, our investments were 4.2 million. Further questions?
If you're going to change on the slide. Right here. Let's see, I should just call them instead of here to, just on PowerPoint, just to do it on PowerPoint. Okay. See, the slides don't actually not work.
Okay. Is there any further questions concerning the fourth quarter financials?
From the.
Oh, yes. I, I'm sorry. I forgot about that one. So again, this is what we netted at the end of fiscal year 2324, the 6544103 for all funds. And this is what we report to the state. The state condenses funds, so that can be a little bit challenging. So four of our funds could be one of theirs. So it's a bit more condensed. But bottom line, what we're reporting to the state ties into our verified cash recap. So we know that these numbers are accurate and that our beginning cash balances will be our exact cash, ending cash balances for any fiscal year. And that's the second page. And this is a recap of what I will, what I will report to the state.
And then just see up here is the 3/12 reserves. So the adjusted balance is technically 9.5, but we have 13 million in the bank. But then again, that includes investments. And then the statute, the road funds have a 1/12 reserve, and that's what that 165 represents.
So we're fairly healthy then.
Does this include like the 13 million that came for the Holy Cross Hospital? Or where's that?
No.
Doesn't even include that. That's what I figured.
That's, yeah, that's.
Totally separate.
So we started off the fiscal year with 3.7 in investments, and again, we're up to 4.2 at the end of fiscal year.
That's good. It's going up because I think it will. Maybe there's investment equity again where it started and where it went to.
At 3.75. And I believe it's at 4.2, but we'll have to get to the general fund budget for me to confirm that number.
Thank you. Thank you.
So has a quarterly, fourth quarter report been submitted or it's been submitted?
We need your approval before we submit it. We'll need the commission approval before we submit it.
Okay, so what's the deadline when it?
The 31st, but it's ready to go. It's all prepared, and all I need to do is attach the resolution to approve, and off she goes.
So, may I, Chair? Okay, just, I'm going to try to summarize before my own mind. Whoops. Okay. Just looking at the big picture, so we didn't, we had to transfer out more than what we anticipated, right?
Correct.
And so it'll be much better because that's as you, history.
Yes, and that's one of the bigger changes that Commissioner Chair Romero was asking me about is how we go about our grant matches this year and how we're going to navigate that. Things can get a little lost in the general fund when we're dealing with grant matches and temporary loans. And so that's, was obviously, we came, came in over budget for the transfers.
So then, okay, so that's just kind of going on. But what has saved us is the fact that we did get more money in than we anticipated.
Correct.
Okay. But I just want to make sure that's what I've seen. Yeah, that's good. Okay. Thank you.
If there's no further questions, we can move on to the final budget.
So statutory, the commission, ready, open body has approved their fourth quarter report.
Okay, so we need a motion approving the fourth quarter report.
Sir?
We have a motion by Commissioner Miguel Romero, seconded by Commissioner Darlene Rahil to approve the fourth quarter financial report ending June 30, 2024. Any further questions or discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, would you call roll? Or Madam Clerk, we don't have one.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Emily, and we can move to the budget.
Okay, and forgive me if I missteps here. This is my first budget presentation, so I appreciate my county manager jumping in and kind of steering me in the right direction. So I appreciate your patience.
You're good. You're going to be a pro after this on that one.
It's a good thing I wore my heels today. That's fine.
I don't know. I put my chair. Between Emily and I, we're just like totally.
Yes.
Is that good enough?
Can everybody see okay?
Yeah.
We need to increase the size of it.
I'm good. So what I did with the final budget is every fund has a just a summary page. This is a lot of information, as you've seen in the PDF that was sent over. So instead of going through each individual line item, which there are thousands, I touched on the significant budget increases or decreases. So we can just touch on that, and then you can drill into the detail and ask questions as you please. But I thought that that might be a more efficient way to get through this more efficiently. So our budgeted revenues this year, 23,318,3579. And that's a 25% increase from last year. That increase was due to, again, under budgeting and taking those actual revenues and projecting a conservative 3% increase in our GRTs. GRTs, I was very hesitant to project over and above 3%. This is an election year. Our country's unstable. We're kind of uncertain. So I thought that 3% was a really safe number. I would definitely rather under budget than over budget and find ourselves in hot water. So the 25% increase is also due to the PIL funds being reallocated to the general fund, which was about 1.6 this year. And then we also reallocated some miscellaneous revenues, such as the office of the court and a few other small items. So our investments, here's our investment number here. Commissioner Rush is 4.7, 4,712,238.19. And then we do have our 3/12 reserves at 5,134,272. So our year-over-year budget increase for expenses is 11%. That is due to the 3% raises that we recently approved and overall inflation costs. We did provide a good cushion in our areas of fleet and public works due to rising fuel costs, equipment, and anything related to construction or building material. So our transfers out are at 5,328,806.52 this year, and those are to supplement budget shortfalls in the funds that we identified when we were reviewing the fourth quarter and temporary grant loans. Now, these temporary grant loans are residual from last year. We will no longer be using the general fund to match our loan grants. But these were already budgeted from last year, so they had to carry over. And then we have transfers in for grants that are reimbursing the general fund from last year for what we.
May I ask a question? So you're creating a new budget for, to hold that money for grants?
Yes, we created a grant match fund. So this was an existing fund that had been used many years ago, but had gone dormant for one reason or another. I'm uncertain of why, but due to our cash being in such a healthy position, we were able to allocate 2.5 million dedicated specifically for grant matches and temporary loans, and 2.5 million to the capital enhancement fund for road projects and capital projects.
Very good. And then, if I may, one last question, since you were talking about PIL. I believe in Brent, you can confirm, but we did get 400,000 more than last year, right? But we never know when that's going to change.
It's reflected in the fourth quarter, but we never know it's going to change.
Yeah.
I've seen it as low as 1.6 in the town's county, and the 1.8, that was been the highest, and the 2.2.
Okay. Thank you. Very good.
Okay, any questions on the summary? Now we get into the details. So here are our revenues. Actual, this budgeted, actuals, final budget. This is where we are over or under budget, decreasing or increasing in certain areas. If you take some time to review that.
Mr. Chair, Emily, could I just ask an informational question? I think I know, other licenses and permits, is that like marriage licenses or?
There's also the clerk's recording fees. So the stuff at the clerk's office is actually misspoken, the clerk's recording fees. Are there, the business licenses go right here, and then anything, the other permits that the planning department does goes in there.
Okay, thank you. So election fees, like that's been increased by 4,253% increase. I noticed the amount is, is it just because it's an election?
It's an election year, so we have the general, the general election in November. And every day, I've been watching the Secretary of State's office varies. Like the school election and the municipal, those are more amounts. I would defer to, not a point for any specific question.
That's right, there is an election year every year. It's just, there's more things going on in some years.
You guys don't have a phone?
Can you, Mr. Chair, if I may, the three-fourths general food GRT, it's in, we're actually dropping down. So we're, it was 104,000 in 2022, and then it went to 33, and then to 23? The food, yeah. Can, can you explain, what are we seeing that, why is it changing drastically?
It's an, it's an increase of 60. It was under budgeted, is what I'm saying. So our final budget for that GRQ medical was at 4,000. Our actuals were at 5, and then we jumped up to 5,215. So that's over 3% of what was budgeted last year.
Oh, it's a budget for, yeah, yeah.
Wait, are you talking that one or the one right above it?
The, wait, I'm sorry, let me line it up. I'm sorry. It's, the one I'm talking about is the, it says three-fourths general food GRT, and I'm looking at the.
The line right above that one.
Oh, this one over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it has 186 increase, 186.56 increase. So I'm looking at.
From the budget.
Yeah.
So it's 186% from the budget. We only budgeted 23,065 came in. So we projected a 3% increase from the actuals.
It's interesting that was the only 22 actuals.
Four, that's why I'm trying to figure out what's the, why are we seeing from 104 to 33 to 20? And it's changing, but it dropped drastically.
But also, remember. But it also, remember, and they talk about this at the legislature, under Governor Richardson, they get away with the food and medical tax. When you go to Albertson's, an example, you don't pay for grocery receipts tax. But the local governments, under Governor Richardson, uphold hardenless agreement. So under Governor Martinez and our current governor, they're, the legislature is slowly chipping away the old hardenment and they're keeping the no grocery receipts tax on food and medical service, but they're trying to phase this out. And that way, the state doesn't have to pay us for it. So they figure out what we should be receiving. So that could explain, if I'm talking to taxation and revenue department, why they decreased, because they're eventually getting to phase this out. The bigger municipalities like Albuquerque are fighting the state on this because of it, it's huge to their budgets.
Yeah, so we're receiving that.
We're receiving the whole, yeah, it's all the whole part.
Yeah, so from the state, we're receiving those funds.
So what we should have received if they were normally paying grocery receipts tax, all eventually told to be phased out.
Yeah, because they're the ones that actually approved this, that no one had to pay. We got, we all got affected, county government.
The state wasn't paying us.
Yeah, got it. But they're gonna face this, face it out, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you. That was, that was good.
On the bottom line, on total cash revenue, could you go column by column, year by year, and kind of just give those numbers at the very bottom?
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, the very bottom of the, where it says total cash revenues. And go back and start with the first column, which is, is it 20, 22, 23? And then kind of, just give us those numbers of the difference in the years, how it's been changing since the 22 to present.
Yes, so these are the actual figures that came in. Net cash was at 19. The next year it came in at 15 million and then we budgeted this column with the 14, 580, 752 is the budget. So these ones are actual for the prior years, the 14, 580 is our current budget. And then this number right here is our projected revenues and this is our final budget numbers.
So on the total revenues just above that, that's our actual budget for this year, right? For example, the 25, our budget is 23 million, is that correct?
30.
Okay, so our actual button, budget now has gone up to 30?
Yes. So these were our actual numbers that came in and we're budgeting the 30.
Okay, so the one on top there is just the revenues?
It's just the revenues, correct?
Okay.
Before transfers and then transfers out.
And is, are there any other questions on this page?
No.
If not, I guess we can move on.
Expenses, hey, there's a lot of detail here. Our salary schedules were based on the recent comp study. Gina did a lot of hard work with this, so she put these together. So these are budgeted salaries for the year and the top columns, or the top rows, excuse me, the bottom rows are our operational expenses. And again, we're looking at actuals and budget and then the net from revenue to expenses. Well, we don't have revenue to expenses in this one, it's a general fund, but that's our ending budget for each fund.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is, so this is the county commission budget and I know we, you know, you can see that we, I've learned over the years, like postage, for example, comes out of this budget. What I'm wondering is, we have a small budget for transportation and then for per diem. If we, for example, in February, go to Washington DC for the New Mexico, our National Association of Counties Legislative Conference, does that come out of this transportation expense?
No, it comes out of the $15,000 per diem expense.
Okay, so like transportation would be.
Transportation is for. Fuel cost.
But like a flight or something would come out of per diem?
Right.
A little confusing, but cool, thank you. And I'm glad to see we've got money for Bookmobile.
This year we took all of the payment to the extension agent's coming on the mission.
Where do you see that? New Mexico State Library Bookmobile, 1,200. Why is it there, the bookmobile, what is that for?
The state of New Mexico has asked us to support their whole library system.
Okay.
So when they, I don't know where it stops in Penasco Valley, but makes a stop there and then it stops in TP and other places, so they ask for our support at $1,200.
Oh goodness, wow, that's interesting. Okay. Yeah, thank you, I'm glad we're supporting that. Small number, but. Very good.
Okay, I guess we're ready to move on.
Okay, next budget is the county manager's budget. And again, actuals, budget, and then year-over-year variance.
How many staff positions do we have in, in the county manager?
We have myself, the two deputy managers, Renee, Lisa, Patsy, and Alice. And we staff Jessica, she's fully on her own.
Was that why we see that decrease? There's 11% decrease?
That's, yeah, that's part, yes, that's part of it.
Okay.
So Jessica this year will be fully on her own department. And then the, her DM here, you said we moved it to 20,000. This also covers the other departments, except for like the countywide elected officials who have their own, this covers employees.
I see.
If there are no further questions, let's move to the next one.
The senior program is the portion of the senior program's wages that we allocate to the general fund. The grant they receive for the senior program doesn't cover a portion of their salary, so we allocate that to the general fund, so this is what the senior program is. It's basically our in-kind match to the grant. County probate, pretty standard, no big changes there. County treasurer, no, no big changes there, pretty standard. And I think the most significant increases or decreases, or increases that you'll see is in the wages.
Mr. Chair, if I may, like that is something I saw through, throughout a number of departments that the wages are, you know, above the 3% raise that we gave. Is that in part, I don't know if you know this, in part due to like filling formerly vacant positions?
Part of that and then for the countywide, on the ballot, there's a change to the salaries. So we don't know where it's gonna go, so we're putting money into the salaries.
In anticipation.
In case the voters do approve that.
Thank you.
So what is actually the question, that the voters are gonna be voting on?
I don't think we've received a copy of the question yet. It's gonna be something to the effect, perfectly wrong, probably, that the voters are being asked to approve through the county commission instead of wages for the sheriff, the clerk, the treasurer, the assessor, and the commission as well, and the probate judge. So instead of it being set by statute, they're trying to empower the commission to do. So we don't know where that one's gonna go, so we're anticipating, we're anticipating if the voters approve it.
Okay, can I ask, just because you're right, that's wide open, right there, right? Depending on budget. What did you all determine? Did you kind of follow the same as the employee or how did you determine what to put in there? That's what I'm getting at.
We still have, just put a.
Just a little bit of.
We put a little bit in there, so we haven't determined that.
Yeah.
I've had a very general conversation with the treasurer. Treasurer, I know this case is also speaking with Valerie as an example, and letting her know where we are, so we started the conversation and we're gonna figure it out from now to December.
Okay, but meanwhile, you just put some in there, just to have.
So right now, there are some variations or differences in, in those salaries. What is the reason for that now? It's just.
So, so we are budgeted for full staff for our elected officials. I believe that it was negotiated between the three elected officials, so what, 257? And that was divided by? 90,000, basically 90,000 apiece that was provided in the elected officials' salaries as a contingency. We're not quite sure where we're gonna land on that, so.
But as it stands right now, elected officials, they, they vary, right? They're not all.
So it's based on statute, the clerk and the treasurer have one set, the assessor has a different set, and I think the sheriff falls in line with the clerk, right? Or his is different too, but I know the assessor is different, but the treasurer and clerk actually, there's matches.
I don't know what logic they used either. Boring.
So I, I hope that makes sense, that there's an additional 90,000 in the elected official's budget for, just in case, the possibility of that be negotiated this year.
Any questions on the assessor? Guess not. Freziers? Any on assessors?
GAF, nothing, yeah. Oh, you're still on assessor GAF, yeah. No, thank you.
Okay, where's it gonna be on, I think we're on sheriff now.
County clerk? Yeah. Mr. Chair, I just have one question about this. The budget for animal control is actually separate from this particular.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to confirm, I thought that's what I saw, thank you.
For the sheriff's department, we did work with the sheriff, our MIS department and with sheriff's administrative assistant, they have eight new hires. And so with new hires, there comes additional costs for safety gear, for uniforms, for vehicles, for, so their budget was increased based on their new hires.
So you say that there are eight new hires now?
Correct.
So, so the sheriff's department was understaffed, but now it's back up to how many?
I don't believe it's, I still don't believe it's fully staffed and I really can't.
Most of, a lot of the new ones, we guys saw in part, right?
Oh, wow, yeah.
The rookies.
That's good, but we're. But once again, am I understanding correctly, all positions have been filled?
No.
No. Okay.
And the emphasis on the sheriff's budget was safety, training, and equipment. So you'll see those larger budgeted items.
On the uniform expenses, I believe we see that they already had that.
And the uniform is, that, there's a jump in that because we contracted through a company in Albuquerque. He's working on that to get all of their gear. I, I don't really know the history, maybe Wendy could speak more into this. I'm, there's a method behind it, but it has a lot of historical data that I'm not really familiar with.
So they, they were given the $600 a couple times a year, but.
Twice a year.
Twice a year, but they were allowed to purchase whatever they wanted. And so to get a more set uniform look and purchase of equipment and negotiated cost, the sheriff has tried to work with Kaufmans or a company in Albuquerque and working hopefully with procurement to get all that figured out and have a set list of stuff. So we give them a list, they go to Kaufmans, get fitted, and they all have the same stuff, same everything, and it's all uniform across the board. And so he has a list and so it did increase the cost a little bit, but I'm not sure about the 600 twice a year, if that 800, the increase is part of.
Yeah, they're still.
Right at the moment.
So Commissioner Romero was asking, when you guys met with the sheriff, is he taking away the ability to have the deputies a check? Or is he saying that a deputy's gonna go to Kaufmans or Neves and, and go with an open PO and spend up to X amount?
He has a set list, it sounded like to me, he's, he had a set list of items that he was gonna allow them to purchase for the amount of whatever the PO was gonna be for them.
So.
No. That, but again, this is something that he's proposing, so we increase the budget to try and meet that, but it's not something, I don't think, that's formally approved by anybody or the sheriff has worked out all the details yet.
If I may, it almost sounds like they, he's trying to get them all to be uniform, obviously, so that's gonna take money because the, obviously, others, the ones that are not up to where he wants them to be or that standard he's setting, is that correct? Is that why?
Can't speak to the sheriff, the whole entire thought process, but also another concern is with a lot of things that we do, we have a person a $600 check, they go get uniforms, and then the next week they quit. And we don't have that $600 back. So there's, we're trying to also hold on to that in a different way. And so he has a set list of, of equipment that he offers to them. And working with HR, there's a process that is possible that you can request that that be paid back if you leave, but it does have to go through procurement and HR to, to have that be something that would affect, to make them pay back some of that money that there, so they don't just take off with it. So there's those, just those concerns as.
Yeah.
Anytime we offer uniforms to any person in any department.
Right, right, yeah, that's a good.
And that was something he was trying to point. And that was something he was trying to point, rein in a little bit more.
It was to my understanding to mitigate risk, control costs and standardize the uniforms. And of course, when you get, give somebody a check, they can, you know, buy the, the bare minimum if they want. And I, I'm not sure what's, what's happening there, but that's what I took away from the conversation with sheriff.
Okay.
Quick question, Chair Romero. So how does that work with, because I know in the past when they were getting checks, they were also getting 1099 for those $600 checks, right? So how does that work with this whole new process? Does that get rid of that process?
It would, it would get rid of that process. But we can provide more detail once it's, uh, once it's explained better to us and once they finalize everything. But we did want to budget, uh, in the hopes that this finally.
Because that kind of explains, you know, if I got 1099 for something, I would keep my stuff because I'm paying on it, right? So if you get rid of that process, then now you can require stuff to come back.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask, um, not about the uniforms, but of professional services? Um, I'm just wondering what kinds of things fall into that because we've, it's almost tripled.
Professional services, with all of the new hires, they have to undergo psychological evaluations.
Got it.
And so this is contract.
Okay.
To provide those services to the.
So that increase is also related to new hires, got it.
Uh, I think the last time I looked at that was $1,500.
Yeah.
Per deputy.
Makes sense, thank you.
So on the furniture and equipment line items, that big increase, is that in anticipation of the move into new office, new building?
No.
No?
No, this, this was primarily based on the actuals and the detail, ammunition, safety equipment.
Okay, any more questions on the sheriff? If not, uh, county clerks? We have Valerie right here. Want to ask her any questions?
So again, standard expenses, clerk's office was provided a, a copy of this to adjust any changes and I think we were good. So if I may, now this one is definitely gone down. Why has it decreased? Yeah, it's less.
Bureau of Elections?
It's a 43% decrease in the budget. I was just trying to figure out what the decrease is, is. No, I don't think that there was any.
Well, I'm looking at that last.
Yeah, the bottom one.
The bottom number, 43%, it's a negative 43, it's less.
Well, this negative 43 is based on our budget, so they have budgeted 516,000, but what actually came in is, there, there's a huge variance. There's our budget, there's our actuals, there's our budget, there's our actuals. So it is, the decrease you're seeing is based on the budget.
So you need to look at, at this, uh, one, so the operating expenses.
Yeah.
Is, the budgeting expense is 120, was budgeted last year was 122. So there's only a difference of 2,174. So like Valerie mentioned, they really didn't have the changes. And then they only spent $59,000 in operating expense.
So there was 120,000 that had been budgeted that didn't get used, is that what?
Right, and then here you can see in salary benefits, there's 394. They did have a couple vacancies throughout the year. I think all the vacancies have been filled except for the bureau elections, but that's the next slide.
That is Bureau of Elections we are on.
Was a huge error, their temporary positions.
Is that what it is?
263,000, so that wasn't correct.
Oh, okay, so that's what, okay, got it, see that explains that, okay. If that's the error that got fixed.
Correct.
Then it would show that negative 43%. Okay, got it.
Human resources. We're anticipating some hires in this department, is that correct?
Correct.
One vacancy in that department. And then. Because a couple of you guys have mentioned it, this 56,000, there's several things that go into this, but also, uh, that's where the, uh, the comps that insurance offices get paid out. So that's 30,000, if you remember.
Okay, 20,000.
And then also, you pay for the physicals and the drug testing, all that professional service then.
I guess there's no more questions on the human resources. Risk management. We only have one, one staff in there, is that correct?
Yes, Jason for you.
Okay. County attorney. So we have a big increase on this one, uh, what are we, what are we anticipating here?
I'm going to have to ask Brent to speak into this because Min Shannon created this budget. I know that there is an increase in this contract amount of 250,000.
So there's the contractual, we pay, uh, rule of law and the N I A, not rule of law, New Mexico legal. And also then here we already do, if we, the commission decides to hire an attorney, in-house attorney, that's budgeted for, we're also budgeting for an E B R O coordinator, that position, which has been budgeted, let's take the burden kind of off of, uh, the clerk in the affected departments and where the courts office and legal, and that would be under this budget as well. We did go up on, uh, the claims as well, uh, in case any of that goes up for us. We'll spend 69,000 on claims that we paid out. And so, uh, we were anticipating in case we pay out any more claims, so that's why you have that increase of $50,000.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, we, we actually have actuals for a full-time position and not just anticipating if we get a full one, right? We have actuals, is this Shannon's position is in, does it fall, does her position fall under here?
Yes.
Okay, that's why we have actual health insurance and retirement for the last few.
This is effectively just Shannon right here. The 102, yeah, really just Shannon.
So if an in-house attorney was hired, what would be the, the cost of that in the budget?
105, if you remember off the top of your head.
It's noted on the salary schedules at the end of your book.
Basically 105.
And so the consideration here is that our contractual, the contract is, is up in the next year? And so we have to go up for R F P in any case?
Yes. Yeah, it's an R F P here.
So a decision can be made to do in-house attorney?
Right.
In addition to, because we'll still need some.
Even if we brought in an in-house attorney, just doing the contractual attorney, until the, until the in-house attorney.
So at what point are we deciding that? I mean, we, we have it in a budget now, it could be posted anytime, is that correct?
That's correct. So if we're going to make a change or want us to start thinking about it immediately.
Since we already have contractual services.
In order to get somebody on board before the contract is up in January.
It's up at the end of, uh, March.
The end of March, actually, okay. But still, it takes some time to post.
Because even if we're going to do another, what's the model, we have to do another R F P, we need to do that in December.
Okay. Facilities.
So I worked closely with Jason on this budget, um, because we are lacking a facilities director now and because of issues in the past, there were, uh, a, a few expenses and contracts that fell off the radar. I know that Jason has been working diligently to identify those and get those budgeted so that our facilities are properly cared for in the way of grounds, maintenance, preventative maintenance. So this budget might look a little bit bigger than it has in the past, but again, anything dealing with construction costs and infrastructure, we really want to make sure that we provide that extra cushion.
Does anybody have any questions? Nope, looks like we move ahead.
So this is my department and all of the county utilities are paid out of my department, so you'll see those big numbers there. Other contractual, we anticipate possibly, um, exploring new budgeting and accounting software. So we made sure to budget for that and that's at 237. And then professional services, anyone we may engage to assist with any financial processes that might help strengthen our finance department.
So how many positions do you have in your department?
Right now we have three open positions in finance.
Three open positions. So are you anticipating filling those positions?
Yes, absolutely. We may have to contract out for our grants administrator because there is an immediate need and we have all been, you know, working together to help manage that, but we really do need a full-time grant person in-house, but until then, those professional services, uh, funds will be used to contract out.
So you think it's better to contract out than to hire somebody?
I, I, I believe we need somebody in-house. The, the contract help, we've been using a gentleman that specializes in the big federal grants, the C D B G grants, and those are incredibly complex. And I'm looking at Chris because Chris has been a, a key player in, in helping to manage this and coordinating, these additional services to help manage the grants.
What about a grant writer?
Chris can speak to this better than I can, but over the last two years, we've taken advantage of the money that the legislature has provided to North Central Economic Development District and we've been working with a grant writer named Talal, I can pronounce his last name. And so essentially, North Central has, uh, provided that grant writer. He's helped me administer some of our grants as well and, uh, wants to speak to what he's helping in so far.
Yes, his name is Talal St. Lot, uh, New Mexico Grants Associates. And, uh, we learned from him because he was working for COG, North Central. So they contracted with him and we did the same. Our COGS these days are doing a lot more, uh, effort in helping the communities go after grants. And they have a bank of grant writers. So what happens is these grants are specialties, federal grants, state grants, uh, nonprofit or foundational type of grants. So if you get one grant writer, they might have this specialty but not these other ones. So by working this, by handpicking the right person to go out there and grant, we're going to get a better result. And then as, as Brett just mentioned, the COG these days are providing those grant writers and we're hoping to, you know, keep supporting legislature to, to provide those funds to them, take that burden off us. I mean, long-term, I, I do agree, we need our own in-house grants administrator, but that's a specialty area, it's going to take us a while to get that right person. So in the interim, uh, we're looking to contract out to fill that space. Until we hire the right person, then get them going, then we will need to contract out.
If I may, so that would be not only, but that's just an administrator with that scope of work changed to be also a grant writer? Because they're different, right? A grant writer versus an administrator?
Currently, the, the way job description reads is they do both. The thing I've noticed coming from working with other communities is if you have a low volume of activity, then you can do both. Our volume of activity, as far as number of grants, it would be, I couldn't imagine somebody that can do the writing and do the administrator, but they're still part of the writing process. They're critical to that interaction with the grant writer, we contract out too. They're still involved in the grant writing by getting the information that grant writer needs, so.
In essence, it's already, yeah, okay. Oh, go ahead.
I, I believe that there would need to be two entirely separate positions. The grant accounting is what we're really struggling with right now. We have no shortages of grants knocking at our door. We just don't have the infrastructure to support, um, what, what's coming down. The, and I, and I think that Wendy can also attest to this, is we've spent a lot of our valuable time doing grant accounting as well because we are short that position and that's, that's an immediate need. Grant writing, I believe, can be a, a complete and separate, um, job description, and I think that.
And I just want to speak to you, but essentially over the last three months, Chris, then the grants administrator, she's gotten support. How much money did you ask for by the end of June 30th or April?
Oh, I'm not sure I can put a dollar. There, there were 11 grants that were coming to an end on June 30th and we had to go and make sure that all paperwork was in because we had dropped in deadline. We get some paperwork and we don't get our reimbursement or dispersal.
Wow, yeah.
It was easily, uh, we requested easily a, a couple million dollars. And then we did identify, uh, a couple of grants, a couple of reimbursements, we would have lost, uh, $100,000 from economic development, we found another $50,000. Just by doing research, we said, oh, we never asked for that a year after. So we caught a few of those and we need to, now we have a little bit of runway to go and look at all our grants to make sure that we didn't fail to, you know, one hand, we paid for, paid for the service, but we didn't ask for the reimbursement. So we need to go and reconcile to make sure we don't leave any money on the table.
Right.
It ends up not being a grant.
So, so Chair, so North Central has been very instrumental in helping and thank you, Chris, because I know you've been working on those grants. But that's not a sure thing, right? That is, right now, and I think that's why you, you said we need to, we hope the legislature will continue to fund. Um, and so, uh, we'll definitely advocate for that, but we don't know when that's going to end, so we need to prepare for, um, having our own folks.
It's a sure thing this year because they're funding.
Right.
So we got some money and we're now able to split our C D G grant, which is very complicated. And so we're good for right now, such a popular program, COG ran out of money pretty quick. But we got in early, so we've, they assigned us an individual.
Got it, okay, that's great.
And I'm sorry, it's Linda Carey, uh, and she, you know, retired.
Right, right, we all know that does work. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chris, for being our grants administrator above and beyond your normal job duties, right?
But just having, you know, I sit on the North Central New Mexico Economic Development Board, and seeing that program grow over the last three and a half years has been amazing. Like, when I first started going to these meetings, it was Felicity, Felicity Fonseca, and now it's an entire team that she's built out. So it is something, and the return on that investment, I think that's the message, like you were saying, Commissioner Viall, to continue our advocacy when the state is like looking at the number, the return on that investment that they provide for that grant writing team is mind-boggling. Like, you know, they spend a few hundred thousand, and they bring in like 31 million to North Central New Mexico. It's pretty amazing, so. And to Chris's point, like the specialization and Brent's point too, is important, and that's what that team brings to us so far, right, right now. So the growth in the program has been amazing, and I think its success, hopefully, will continue speaking for itself.
I'm just, I'm now wondering if New Mexico Counties, because I am headed to a New Mexico Counties pre-legislature meeting, and, and so I'm just wondering, and I'll check when I get there, how they're advocating for this, to make sure that it continues.
If I may, Chair, I do want to point out that, coming from the nonprofit sector that I served in for a couple of years, grant writing is vital to keeping organizations nonprofit alive, as much as local governments. What I see is, and the reason this is the initiative that Felicity has put this into work, so I'm trying to build that team, is because other local governments are dealing with the same issues of concern. That's why we're trying to adapt and develop that. To hire somebody internally is, it's like trying to capture a unicorn. And especially the way we, the way the position descriptions built right now is, we're asking too much, we're putting a square peg in a wrong hole. If we do fill that position, we're actually going to have to have it as a pay grade 18, 19, because it's not classified correctly, and we're undervaluing the position. So if we separate it, and position descriptions are kind of being redeveloped and built to have grant administrator, and then a grant writer, there'll be two different elements of this finance department that could support this down the road. And yes, that's a long-term vision, but at the same time, knowing that North Central is working on this, that shows all local governments are weak in this within their departments.
Yeah.
So please advocate for that moving forward, because if we have that funnel of money coming through, it's going to help support everybody.
And I know we're on finance, but because, because we're talking about grants, Chair, if I may, the other part to that is that we need to have a healthy fund to match on this end, because we can write all the grants in the world, right? But if you don't have the grant match, or we can't, you know, kind of foot the bill, we're in trouble, right? We can't even touch the grant. So that, that might be another site to advocate for, but that's also just a consideration.
And I honestly believe they're two very distinct skill sets, the grant accounting and the grant writer. So to combine those skill sets, and to try to find that individual that possesses an accounting and financial background, but also grant writing, it's, it's, it's difficult. So that's why I believe that they need to be two separate positions as well. And the grant matches and the temporary loans is something that we did identify. And with Chris's hard work, we're getting a lot of money back in the door to repay the general fund that will be evident when we get to the transfers.
Okay. And I have a question in regards to the finance, that what does it mean? The penalties and late fees, and there's a 900% increase. What exactly do we do there?
Penalties and late fees are any type of IRS penalties for late submissions of 941s. And that's something that we have been working on and battling with, with the IRS. We don't have any indication that we were late with our payroll tax reporting, but the way that it's transmitted to the IRS, we keep getting these, these late notices. So I believe that we have finally come to a resolution with many letters, many emails, and confirmation of our timely submissions, but we still were getting penalized. So we had to, of course, cover that, and we're hoping that we're not going to see that again this year. So that's, those penalties and late fees, the actuals, that was, that was due to those payroll tax submission errors.
Any more questions on finance? Not to project manager? Questions on project manager? I have, I have one that's kind of outside the budget, but is a project manager, Brent, going to be involved with the hospital renovations?
No, Richard won't, will not be involved in the hospital renovations. That's going to be a separate project management company that the hospital's going to pay for.
Okay, that sounds good.
So does this cover, I'm sorry, Richard and Gilberto, got it.
So there's two in that, two in that department, okay. Purchasing. Any questions on purchasing? How many do they have?
Two.
Two, okay.
The larger amount, that's 60,000, all of the zero R's pieces are held there, so that's why that number is a bit big.
I have a question in regards to purchasing. And forgive me, because I, maybe I just don't remember, but every year, at the end, before we start a new fiscal year, do, all, everything's caught up, we're paid off, is that correct or incorrect? I mean, I'm just wondering, do we start, you know?
That goes by the different part. As an example.
Oh, that's right, there's different.
Some of them that need to get paid, or a couple of them that need to get paid from facilities. We have to, now, when you're paying this fiscal year, then there'll be a procurement violation for some of them.
Right. So are there measures put in place? You know, I don't know what the turnaround time is, or if we have one. But obviously, that caused a procurement violation. I'm just wondering, you know, I guess, I guess the answer is no, because if we did, then we would have had everything paid up to date. So there's things out there still.
Right. Jason, we're going to find us around two weeks' time, and he's working with Patty and also get this rectified.
And closing out the books, it's real grand, Ace. There was a invoice that either some facilities failed to turn in, or it wasn't ever identified in a submission of a accounts payable run back in November. So it's been quite some time. So when I was reconciling with the finance department to make sure that all bills were paid at the end of the year, they, this flagged it, that there was one that had an invoice that hadn't been covered.
Is there, I suspect there's checks and balances, you know, because there's such a process. You put in a request, right?
Now, when you have an open PO with a, at any given time, you could be establishing, they can need something for the sprinkler system, so they're going to need maybe just a screw or bolt. So when you have little tiny mustings inside them, some of those, it may stay in the truck, and they don't submit those into, for, for, for it to get paid out of. So those little things can get lost. So for those open POs are a little bit difficult, but we're, we're trying to work what will happen from this moment forward, whoever's the next director. I hope that we'll, we'll have a process, and, well, we, I am developing a process that hopefully they will foresee coming moving forward, that quarterly, we will be contacting each of these entities that we work with on a daily basis, that they're going to reconcile that quarter amount, so we know that all invoices have been covered, and so we don't have a procurement violation flowing into the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions on purchasing, if not, I think fleet?
So within the fleet budget, we did something a little bit different this year. We created a line item specifically designated to the sheriff's department. So sheriff's vehicles often require specialized tires, brakes, equipment. So we wanted to make sure that sheriff had his own funds, and it wasn't eating up the budget for the rest of the county vehicles. So we created that line item to track his expenses, and that way, it wouldn't, it wouldn't start eating up the budget for the remainder of the county vehicles.
So the sheriff has a separate?
Yes, so you can see there's a maintenance vehicle, furniture, and equipment, and then right.
Oh, sheriff, right next to it, got it. Yeah, right, makes sense, okay.
Nothing's wrong, it's Paulson managing, you can't pay those expenses differently.
Okay, doesn't look like there are any more. Go ahead.
Ops is basically payroll.
Total operating expenses, Chair, 134, am I seeing something? I mean, that's, where's the increase?
For ops?
Yeah, total operating.
Oh, no, this is the, this is the ops department.
Right.
Jason, Deborah.
Let's see.
Yeah, this, this department is essentially, consists of the office manager that will work with Solid Waste, Fleet, and Public Works. So has a total of an office manager and then two assistants. So they facilitate any, any or all business-related transactions that come through the directors, as far as going through the procurement process or paying out accounts payable. Additionally, there is another component that Deborah works with, with grants, and supports Public Works with some of our New Mexico DOT compliance with, you know, the LGRF agreements, resolutions, and so forth. So there's an additional aspect to her job description that's different than most public work, or office managers.
So your, your position, is it in this department, or is it in the managers?
My current position, my current position's in the managers, but I oversee, that's one of the sectors of the eight departments that I oversee. And then each director, within the operations division, Solid Waste, Public Works, and Fleet, all work cohesively with this office manager.
So there are two positions in this, in this.
Three.
Three positions.
Yeah, three directors will work cohesively with this office manager over the operations.
So the operational side of it is in the fleet department?
Okay.
Well, the operations is in all three components of that, fleet, public works, and solid waste.
Right, okay.
So this was built, Brett can speak to this a little bit more, but this office or position was built to support an office, I guess it would be an administrator that would support everybody in their location of pulling all of their essentially day-to-day operations of that, and allowing the director to just handle the operations within those respective departments that they work with. This is more of the administrative component of it that they take care of.
What I noticed, and the reason why I ask is because the, there was nothing in, no money's put in the maintenance contract supplies and all that. It's very clean, you know, so it's because it's on the other.
It just supports, so.
Yeah, got it.
Going back to the example we just talked about, if if Paul says, hey, we need to get a unit, new brakes for the sheriff's office, then either Deborah, Brenda, or Azelia will process that procurement request, and then we'll hit that line up.
Out of there, okay, got it, okay, thank you.
Let's move to general or management info, systems.
So this is probably one of our bigger budgets that we've worked really hard to create. We have consolidated all of the general funds technology into one budget. And I spoke about this during interim budget, but there was such a need to control these costs, to identify contracts, to make sure that the equipment that we're purchasing for technology is compatible with our current systems. We contracted with Telavan this year, and Michael Brier and his team have done an amazing job in working with the county IT needs, identifying issues that need to be upgraded, new systems, new contracts. So this is, this has been a huge undertaking, and it's kind of a pilot project right now. It will probably be need to be tweaked as, as we go on, but working with Colin and Mike, these are the amounts that we felt were appropriate to address the county's IT needs within the general fund.
If I may speak to this, wow. This has grown over the years, and it's kind of, this is, IT is an interesting component of any entity, you know, I dealt with this at the same thing within the school district, we've been a school member for a couple of years. It's vital that we have, and we provide supportive technology to our staff, because essentially, that's their day, it's a day-to-day environment that they utilize these technologies to move forward with their day-to-day functions. What I've seen over the time is we've invested in, say, you got to build around that budget, but essentially, when this goes down, we all go down with it, and we're non-functional at that time. We moved, as in the school district in 2014, from a $200,000 budget to a $600,000 budget. That provided 3,000 computers or devices to each of our students, and then they helped our whole entity with, you know, malfunctions. See the same thing as I came to the county, it was the same type of situation. We've been having issues where phone systems aren't working, you know, components weren't being purchased, you know, in timely manner, we're dealing with 2007 devices of Windows. Right now, we're bringing everything to the forefront, but what comes with that is there's some complexities to the, to our departments, whether you have Axon cameras at the, at the sheriff, that need, have technologies that, you know, need a component that's going to be a specialized communication device, a recording device that goes to a cloud. These are all kind of specialized components. We need a Jesus certification within our dispatch to run stuff through DPS that helps our communication through DPS, to make sure everything is, is working as the officer needs it. We've kind of been working around this, and not, we're paying for services, but we're never utilizing it. So at this point, by having a team of contractors that come into the entity, and this goes back to the same thing, I keep using unicorns, because you can't capture a unicorn, there, you can't. So what happens is we're having specialized individuals that are going to work for one entity that's going to provide the services, because we don't have enough IT techs in this community. So by having these individuals, we're meeting all our compliance issues that we were, were neglected in the past, and we're, we're receiving a much better service at the end of the day. Colin has done a great job keeping us afloat where we needed to, but it's too much for one person. And that's his vision and his plan moving forward. But I would agree with it, because each entity, if you speak to majority of the, I guess we talk local governments, but to some large local governments, you, you can, if you ask about their IT, they're going to have a group of 20. A lot of these are subcontractors that go in now. And these, these, that's the component of how they're keeping their entity functional and upright. And this is kind of like the way of the future right now, of how we're having to deal with those specialized individuals. So I, moving forward, we can probably have a work-study session to provide, so you can actually see all the intricate parts that are making this. It's like an orchestra, and Colin essentially would be the individual that's making the music play. But at this point, we have a specialized person out of Telavan that helps every component within our Taos County. Any questions?
No, that helps.
Okay, any more questions on the, on the management info? Okay, let's move to planning and zoning. So we've added some, some money for, for, for staff for short-term rental enforcement.
No, there's been no changes to staffing as of yet, so this is still the same current staffing model that we have.
That, that's, Mr. Chair, that's kind of my line of questioning as well, it's like, the short-term rental changes will require staff, will require communication, so publication and Taos news information, probably, I don't know. But does this budget take into account any of that work that's probably going to be happening in the next couple of months?
June, Shannon, Wendy just corrected me that there is a new position that Rachel requested. June, Shannon, Randy just corrected me that there is a new position that, that Rachel requested, that HR had been working with there on, and it's a new position.
Permit technician, Rachel, you can already brought in for the commission last spring. Yeah, and it's already been, sorry, there's already a job description and G M thirty into the salary schedule. And so it is included to already be in the salaries that are here.
And that, can you, can you shed some light on what would that person be doing to get, would she be able to help this?
Right, yeah.
Rachel wants someone to assist the building department side, kind of also assist in the front desk area, taking in the building permits, and doing a lot of that work that kind of bombards the building side so they can have time for more of their inspections and more of, so Rachel can get to more of the director stuff because it's only really Joe that goes out right now. So Rachel does the building, the CBO and planning director, and Joe goes out on the field, and Christopher does the plans examiner. So they kind of need one more person on the low level so they can continue to do that. Right.
Review all the permits and make sure that everything else is all correct before it gets passed on to someone else. So that, say Rachel doesn't have to come and say, oh, I'm sorry, you can sign here, you got to pay their signature.
So upfront, they'll be able to analyze?
It's going to break her up to actually do the stuff that she needs to.
Right.
The person will be taken care of, find themselves in that. Then the job description is already going to improve, so I believe they came before permission.
I don't recall, but, right.
I, I don't remember, I think it's something more recent.
Yeah, so anyway, she did one of the classes, and there's been a job description, and it's an integral position that just helps support the staff.
And I don't think any of us would doubt that, matter of fact, I think the question is, do they need more? Right, because?
Exactly, if we're going to make the changes around short-term rentals, we need to make sure that we're budgeting for what it will take to implement and run that program.
Right, it's, it's a very, very busy office, so it's a little difficult to get all that.
Right, and, and because we're getting a lot of phone calls on the, the addressing side, the holdup, and how it holds them up and retaining a home, because that's the first step, right? And because we all know priority for us is housing, it's, we're just getting a lot of phone calls, so I'm not sure, I'm just kind of concerned that we need another one.
You got to remember too, we also have three vacancies.
So we got to fill them.
So there's, one is EMS, there's this position we were just talking about, and then we hire Chief.
Most debut.
So if they're all filled, then it would definitely change the.
Help.
Yeah, totally, yeah. Just want to make sure you guys have enough.
Yeah, and what, Commissioner Bush is saying, Commissioner Turner, obviously, because they're also adding more work.
This fund is no longer active, but there were actuals, so it's included on there. Again, that's a buyer chief that was allocated to the general fund that was moved to EMS, so that's not really relevant. Animal control.
Okay, so the appropriation, capital outlay for the feasibility study would not be in here, is that correct?
No.
So, so what about those, those monies, including the community centers, $100,000? When do they come into play? The, the question is on the capital outlay appropriations, they're not in this budget. So are they available now for the community centers, for the feasibility study?
There, some of them are, but not all of the, for example, the $15,000 for hospitals not included in there. Now, we haven't received a grant agreements back from the state, so we haven't included those new rent agreements that you approved a couple of weeks ago into this final budget. Later on in the, in there, she'll get to the legislative grants that are included in the budget, but that wouldn't be included in this section.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask a, a question about what is included in here? Have all of the, the three animal control officer positions been moved into the sheriff's budget? Because we've got those like zeroed out here.
Yes, they have been moved into the sheriff's budget.
Okay, thank you. So this budget has been, the operating side has, oh, okay, it hasn't really, okay, I see, no questions. The 34% is that thing, yeah, okay.
Okay, go ahead, move to civil emergency. No questions there?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what is civil emergency preparedness, what is, what are we spending money on here?
This is, this is Bobby Lucero.
Yes.
His department, and this is our, the way in which we respond to disasters, emergencies, so this is all.
That's, I mean, I think we, so we call it the Office of Emergency Management. I just wasn't trying to match up the titles of the, of Bobby's department and civil, I don't think I've seen that before, civil emergency preparedness.
They've changed it technically, so, or.
Who changed it? The state changed it?
No, I'm with you.
Oh, okay.
That, that was just, well, we had internal, still the same office.
Yeah, that's all I was wanting to.
I, I didn't change it, it was, this was how it was when I put my hands on it, so.
You're not just randomly renaming things?
I just went in here and changed this.
Oh, I see, okay.
It, it is that way for the state.
Yeah, okay.
So the state calls it one thing, we call it something else, and this is the state title, thank you, that's all I need to know.
And now we get into our new economic development budget. This is Jessica's budget to support her, you know, economic development endeavors within the county. So this is new, it's small, and again, this is going to be kind of a pilot program to see how we navigate through economic development in the new fiscal year. And lastly, we come to our recap. Our prior budget. Cash, income, expenses, transfers, current budget variance.
So if I may, where is Jessica's income, I mean, where, where does she get paid out of?
Jessica's currently getting paid through ARPA, through the ARPA funds.
So that's why we don't see her.
Correct.
Right, okay, got it. Okay. See, we forget these things, I know, we're told, we just forget, or me anyways, so revenues.
So again, the fourth quarter, we went over our cash, investments, revenue, and expenditures, and we netted $13,901.45, $768.75. So that was our ending cash after all, it was all said and done. This cash balance sheet applies the new fiscal year with less expenses, transfers, plus income. So our projected cash at the end of the day would be a $10,596.431.63. We have to hold our free twelfth reserves, which brings our cash balance unrestricted at $5,462.161.43. So this little box down here, this just identifies our total revenues, our budget transfers, and total expenses. So budget transfers are not, they are recurring transfers that are for the support of other departments that happen every year, so we consider those recurring transfers, and so our budget balances, and that's zero. Questions on the recap?
No.
I was trying to remove that big circle and it got somehow got in there. Okay, so GRT infrastructure, these are funded through GRTs, and again, we projected GRT increase at a moderate 3%. The expenditures are for infrastructure improvements, maintenance, building, and technology, and also capital purchases, so, oh, there's two of them, this one doesn't have the follow-up, okay. And so here is the actual budget, and Grant and his team created this budget, so if we could probably speak a little bit more into the various expenditures within this budget, if there's any questions. This is standard revenue and expense allocation, there's no significant changes. These correction fees come in and out, they go back into ADC. Solid Waste, this is also funded by GRTs, landfill, landfill user fees, and other sources of income. Again, we expect, we projected 3% increase and 3% to 5% increase on other income. And there is the income side of it, and they also have the recycling landfill, fundamentals, and recyclables. So there's other fees that are fed into this, for income, fed into this account as well.
Does it show here, if, Chair, does it show here if what we pay the tenant house, it's not broken out?
Yeah, it does.
Sorry if I'm not seeing it.
That's on the trans side, so tenant house.
Okay, salary base. That's on, let's see, let me find that here so I can compare.
I'd be, I'd be interested at some point in seeing like what, what that contract looks like or what, what we're supposedly getting for that, and not right now, just for, for future.
That's going to be a difference, everything that we collect from our expectations that we take to the landfill, we essentially, that those are activities.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Wait, hold on, I see, I see, okay, so, so we're now, these are going up is what, what we're seeing, okay. Are we?
What's going up, if you see, over, there's a three-year trend on, on our population is, is more more individuals utilizing transportation. One thing that is kind of, that working with the town, who you kind of covered, is they're, over the last couple of months, they're scale operator, there's been a large turnover of the town with some of the staff there, but there's an interesting element that's, I mean, that I, our solid waste drivers have covered. That's, instead of punching punch cards, whatever is left over, if they've already exhausted all punch cards, they're essentially just, the constituent is still able to throw the trash, but we're, they're sending the bill to the county instead of asking the constituent to pay the additional.
And that falls under the anti-donation, right? You can't do that, right?
So, well, yeah, so we're in the middle of trying to see that they're writing, have to go back and probably send the invoice out to the constituent, because there's a couple, it's not a large amount, but there's some areas that were being billed for drop-off, and that's something that came up with the last.
Yeah, I, I was wondering how we confirm, you know, what, what are the checks and balances that we know we're being charged the appropriate amount?
We get it, and somebody goes to scale with our solid waste drivers, will go and they'll be set air weight, they'll have a little weight, they'll end up getting a ticket, that ticket should coincide with the building. And that's what we're seeing, with a couple of issues that were, were paying a couple of times over, but it was, it was launched into individuals, and there's actually at least a move in.
Oh, got it, okay, thank you.
So on, on this, I'm, I'm looking at the first page on, on that actual revenues, as of June 30th, with 3, 3 million, 299, 349, is that correct?
3 million.
We're, we're showing actual, actual revenue, 3 million, is that what we're getting?
I'm sorry, actuals on solid waste?
Yeah, on solid waste, page one. And then the expenses are only 1 million, 5, 5, 5?
The actual revenue is 1.8 million, 48, 725.
So, so are we saying that the, the department is carrying itself or not? I mean, if we have more revenues coming in than expenses, is it, is that correct, is that?
The department is carrying itself.
And then, but also we had, we did have vacancies during the year, there were some expenses that we didn't, there's some expenses that we didn't have anybody.
Okay, let's see, see if I can figure it out, okay. So.
Yes, and yeah, what Brett had said about positions not being filled, we also have to understand that we're under budget because of those vacancies, and so that affects our bottom line as well for our budget.
So you, we do plan to increase staff?
We, we, we are budgeted for full staff, but unfortunately, we don't have the staff at this time. We're not fully staffed in solid waste. But, yeah, and are you thinking about, because we know, again, we're getting ready to, so we're trying to figure out, are we really, you know, or does it show that, that we're going to be in a negative down the line, other than the analysis that's been brought forth, right? But we don't, I guess you're trying to see it here.
Yeah, yeah, that one told us that we were going to be way behind. If we're not now, then in a few years, we're going to be short, have shortfalls.
Chair Romero, our collection rate has increased a little bit this year to reflect this, but if we go over our three-year span, we should probably pull that data for you, it'll show that we're, we're not fully solvent within that, and that's what needs, and at the end of the day, every entity should be having a rate study where five years, and we, it's been about 11 since the last time. The other implementation for the rate study was not just for us to come solvent and bring us up to where we need to be, it's to establish the recycling department because that's how our current ordinance reads. So, so at that time, each of these will bring this into the mix. One thing that's not being recorded here is any large capital purchases, there's, we need, we're in need of two solid waste trucks, and that's going to hit our budget next year for probably close to about $700,000. And then the bins that would go there, if we would have purchased that this year, it'd show that we didn't have any large capital purchases. But with the rate study, it's going to be built into the collection rate that we're going to have reserves that we will never have to dip into operational dollars because this will, will support, the department will support itself with all capital purchases.
So is a freestanding recycling center a real possibility?
Yes, that's, that's the goal of trying to pull it together, whether it's going to be on Diaz Street or if the town has other plans, we're searching for another site. But yes, that's something that's coming down the pipeline, so either it could be just collection centers at our all regional collection centers where we currently have, it's just, it's really not feasible because we're having to move it twice. It'd be nice to have one regional hub, and we bail it and then just have the, just the wholesaler pick it up from us at that point, but right now, if we keep it at our transfer stations, it's a lot of
So why are we?
It's a losing effort.
Why are we seeing three solid waste individual, you know, not one contiguous total? Is, because there's three different pages, right? But that's what I think is confusing.
The first page is the revenue, the second is administration, and then, let's see.
So you broke it down, okay.
Yeah, there's three different departments within solid waste, there's the administration, the operations, and then, excuse me, three different pages, the revenue, the.
Oh, I see it, revenue, expenses, and I see.
And then the operations. Fernando.
It's ready, you know, it's the administration.
Oh.
That's what confused me, I didn't see that revenue.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Any more questions on solid waste?
No, but I'll just make, since we just were talking about recycling, just a little plug, like we've got your, your water bottle and, you know, my sparkling water can, you can recycle them right out front of the building, just for the reminder to all of us, right outside.
Okay, property valuation fund, FCSF's fund, expenses and revenue are standard allocations, there's no changes there. Public Works, so we have a 22.17 budget increase, again, the 3% GRT increase, other revenues, that'll Again, the 3% GRT increase, other revenues, standard allocations based on 2324 actuals. So we're increasing our budget expenditures by 10.85%. And these were based on actuals and director requests. The director requests were for different types of contracts, needs within the department, rising fuel costs and equipment costs. Again, this is supported by the general fund. We have a 1.3 million transfer scheduled to supplement And this fund also has to carry on Fox Research, which
Any questions on public works?
Okay, Tous, Murches County Emergency Plan. These are our ARPA funds. So Brent can probably speak into these budget items. I know that they're to be spent in a very specific way.
Question. So we've got Jessica is one individual that comes out of here. Who else comes out of here?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. So what happens when we get done with this funding? Where does she go?
We have to support her in the general fund.
Okay.
So it's our goal that gross receipts tax, tax base would justify.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Through the general fund.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may. So we have, the final 2025 budget says 3.699 million. Is that how much we have to spend by the end of the year?
That's how much we have to convert by the end of the year. And then we're getting different conflicting reports on that. Me, Jessica, Jason, and Chris have been meeting on that. And we have another, because there's some that we're going to send towards destination stewardship. So it goes into the business recruitment information center, the brick that she presented on two meetings ago. And.
Anyway, it also committed to invest in housing.
Right.
Way back when we first got this funds in, a million dollars toward housing, however that looks.
Say that louder. What did you say?
We had committed to invest $1 million of our ARPA funds into housing. It'd be great at some point down the line, as you guys continue your conversations and get clarity on that, to see the breakdown of like where all of the ARPA funds actually did go. Because I think we are pretty aware of what we said through that community-driven process and, and the fact that like we were paying Jessica out of this, like just, it would be great to see it all kind of wrapped up in one story, when, when we can pull that together.
Right. I want to invest in the Tous Main Street, the Artist, Tous Arts Council, the Artist Inc. Then we have for the brick, and then the Maker Space also. And, and we're still looking at working with the state on, where we've discovered on, is using, you can't use ARPA funds directly for Blueberry Hill, as an example, but if they're used to match other funds, you can use other ARPA funds from the state, then you can use that. So we are looking, if there's any debt of money that we need for Blueberry Hill, that we will take it from here. So.
Thank you. Yes, please do just.
It's all bought out in the next couple of weeks.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, next is the State EMS Funds. This is a grant from Health and Human Services. This is to support to various operational expenses, and this is budgeted in accordance with the grant agreement. So Mike and David, they all put that budget together. So it's.
It's taking EMS.
Various expenses throughout the.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Okay. 911 Central Dispatch, 3% gross receipts increase, investment income 3% increase, and a budget increase of 2.7 million. The significant increase is to address technology needs within Central Dispatch. So again, going back to the conversation with our IT budget, this is definitely something that we want to make sure that we have the funds available for Central Dispatch. Their IT needs are substantial, and so we are trying just ensuring that their funds are available for whatever projects they may have concerning IT.
So, Chair, the IT is, theirs is not included in the MI?
No, they have their own revenue source.
So they have to be kept separate. Got it. Okay.
And Chair, just a clarification, Emily, I think I, I know, on the fiscal '24 budget, there's the few lines that are all 1.755 million, the refunds and reimbursements, GRT administrative fee, county GRT. Is that, was that just not accurate in?
I can't, I can't think into why that was budgeted that way.
It seemed like it was maybe an error.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But these are the actuals, and this is what we projected, our common actuals.
Great. That looks more real. Thank you.
Okay, Farm and Range, standard revenue expense allocations, no significant changes. State Fire Protection Fund, this is funded through the State Fire Marshal allotment, standard operational expense allocations, no significant changes in budget. These are various operational costs across the fire districts. Whoa. And we're on to Law Enforcement Protection Fund. This is a grant, and it's to be expended in accordance with the grant agreement, so that's how it was budgeted. The only significant change in lodger's tax, promotional and non-promotional, is that we've created budget line items for the town plaza payroll and related expenses.
So, so on this, we have some pretty healthy balances. And at one point, we talked about being able to hire people out of lodger's tax, like for the plaza. Is that still a possibility?
Yes, that's what we budgeted. Oh, I'm sorry.
So we've been working with HR to, these, there's, represents two positions that are put into the budget. We were putting three. And so this will be to work at the plaza and at the X Center. You can use lodger's tax, non-promotional at the X Center. So we're currently, these positions are not posted. We're not going to change the job description, so we're going to use the same job description that we use for
And Mr. Chair, if I may, you, you did mention that healthy budget here. And a couple of funds back, we were talking about the ARPA funds, in using ARPA to fund, to, for our contribution to the destination stewardship plan. Could we use, could we save ARPA for other efforts and use some of our lodger's tax for?
Just have some of this kind of.
Okay. Okay. I'm just wondering if we've got a healthy balance here, and we've got other needs that ARPA could address, like maybe all of the destination stewardship plan support, whatever we decide on, could come out of lodger's tax? Just a thought.
And I would say, if I could add to that, I think that's a great idea, but I would, I know there's a lot of little needs within like the X Center. I'm not sure if we've captured all of that yet. So I would make sure first and foremost that.
I'm just going to take you. So 395,000, we want to finish the improvements of the building of that.
Yeah. So for example, like I was there on, at the event, the Noxious Weeds, and the, one of the, what do you call it? The door wouldn't open. They were having troubles to get some of the stuff out from the actual, the other building. They have the arena, excuse me. And so I'm just, you know, apparently it's been like that for a while, so I understand that they're having to lift it themselves versus the.
First of, I'm having trouble securing contract with the townhouse. So we don't have to be a whole board, some overrated doors, there's an order that's on it.
Yeah, right.
And overrated door hasn't secured time to make that happen.
So you're aware of it then?
Yeah, I'm aware, yeah. I just had, I don't know why everybody fills a house like Siberia, but if everybody's a lot of turkey, it's hard to get to be now. It took me to get some rural test for mold, when we had to fly in a couple of stolen cords. It took me two weeks to get something done. So, but anyways.
Okay.
At the end of the day, I know about it, and we're addressing it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure all those little things. Yeah.
Any more questions on lodger's tax? Recovery Foundation Fund, standard senior citizens. This is grant funded and extended in accordance with the grant agreement, so it's budgeted according to the Each tab projected 3% GRT. And a significant increase in expenditures was due to the increase in the SOCOM safety net contract.
So.
Too bad it doesn't allow you to tab there, huh?
It does. I don't know where to find this. Higher excise tax fund is funded through GRTs, standard operational expense allocations across all fire districts. There were some budgeted increases for vehicle purchases and for buildings and structures, so those would be Records recording fees, no significant changes, standard revenue expense allocations. Detention fund, 3% increase in GRTs, expenditures, significant increases are due to mental care, prisoners, feeding of prisoners, housing juvenile contracts. And again, this fund cannot support itself, so it relies on a 1.428 million transfer from the general fund.
So we have a pretty good increase in detention.
I'm sorry?
We have a 26, 26% increase in the detention fund?
Yes.
Increase.
Food service contract running up, or healthcare contract running up, or possibly 300,000. So those are huge hits to us, and we, we were on the final year of the food service contract so that we're in a new cycle with them for this budget year.
Go ahead. Additionally, our, as of Friday, our juvenile detention services went up from 2:20 a day to 4:59 a day. So when we do have a juvenile that has to be detained, that's going to be a hit to our budget. So currently, what we're going to work on is working with Marica Meadows with Juvenile Leadership Bureau. It would be cheaper for us to secure a bed and have a contract with San Juan. Will actually reduce the, the amount if, but it's going to be a large amount. We're just projecting that we're going to have, that they're going to need a bed, but it will be cheaper for us in the, in the, at the end of the day. Because if you can factor $459, times 365 days, it's, it's, it gets expensive. We'll end up saving $40, $40,000 if we go about it for a contract that will just secure a bed and we'll always have one. So, so that's, that's something that's coming down the pipeline that I hadn't told you yet, but.
Actually, Antonio mentioned it to me, so I have a budget for that.
Ah, nice.
Well, thanks for the communication.
100,000 that went up from 160, so we budgeted an additional 20,000. Community schools, this is a new fund. We don't really have any data on it. So the 70,000 on this one, it's coming from the, the community schools, if you go up? Yeah.
We're just getting money from townhouse and the two quavos.
Okay.
And so, so it's not, this doesn't look perfect because we don't have the data yet, so. And then, yeah, there are transfers. So 120,000 represents what the CLOM projects out salary to be, the salary and benefits. So if it breaks, if all goes well, we'll be bringing the Java scripture to commission at the next meeting.
So, so what will Tous County be paying for that position?
$50,000.
$50,000.
So that's how I transfer it.
And that is the, that is a match for what the town has committed as well, right?
So what about all the benefits to, for that person? Who pays for those?
The town, the county, and the quavos.
Okay.
So, so if you look at the 50, the 70,000, there's 50,000 represents the town, and then there's money coming in, shit coming in from Tous Quavo, and we're still working on Pickle East Quavo. And then there's North End Forum, there's Southwest, Southwest Foundation, that's also contributing money to as well. So we don't have a firm number on that, so. But anyway, it's going to be more than, it's going to be more than $10,000. When Emily asked me to budget for every night, it was just maybe flushed out, but we, we don't have the final number from the foundation.
So this can change.
I agree.
Well, it's like anything. Okay. And is that 50 years, every, every year we'll be putting 50,000? Is that the?
Right, unless, yeah, unless the future commissions decide the school districts and the town has to continue.
Got it. Okay, that's how.
Okay, another new fund, Veteran Cemetery.
So here again, we have some money from some staff there.
Yeah, we have to transfer in. The CLOM did work on the salary schedule. The HR staff worked on the job descriptions. Ed Mendis from the department reviewed those as well. I think we do have some options on, on this side of it, cemetery as well.
Yeah, there's a lot of uncertainties with these new funds, but we wanted to at least create a place Yeah, there's a lot of uncertainties with these new funds, but we wanted to at least create a placeholder and then adjust as we kind of figure out the.
So on that veterans, do we, are we anticipating soon to put out for a position? I mean, are we going to be hiring soon to try to get that going or, I mean, the money's there, you've funded it, but.
Right, we should probably be in the next month or two, let's say two months to put that out. I do think if we hire, and I haven't flushed this out with Gina or facilities, we and Jason kind of talked. Is if we hire those two other positions is that maybe we can use facilities to cut the grass and do those maintenance of the ground. So then we might not need the money that we're projecting here. We need somebody in the office to work with the families, that we do need. Then, and then if for the burials, we need that too as well. So we're thinking maybe in the short run, facilities could help support the cemetery as well with the cutting of the grass and the basic maintenance.
If we get two more.
If we get the two more, then we would have some ideas or talk out with Gina on this.
So we will be in position to do some burials before the end of the year?
Yes, it should be. No matter what, we still need to get trained.
Right.
So they agreed to train us and we need to hire that as well.
And what about our dedication? It seems to me like the Veterans Day, the Veterans Day might be a good, good time to maybe plan something that.
We, we were waiting on to hear back from the governor's office on which day would work for her. For the governor, Veterans Day would probably not work for her. And so originally they were looking at that last week of August or beginning of September. I don't think August is doable at this timeframe anymore. And so just waiting on on her to tell us when she can come up to do it.
Just kind of contingent on the governor giving us the date.
Right.
Okay.
Forest and watershed fund. I met with Chair Logan last week and we had discussed the creation of this fund. Again, this is new. We're going to have to take some time to hash out on all the details. I know that it's been a vision for a while to create this fund. And so we started it with the $300,000 transfer in from the general fund as a placeholder until we work out the details on how it's all going to work. So, but I'm pleased that it's on the budget.
So there, we've not worked out a salary schedule, we've not worked out any of it. Emily said this is just a placeholder.
Would there be one, two positions?
For right now, we're starting with one. It could grow to as many as total of three. Let's start slow first.
Okay.
Glad to see that there.
So we received opioid settlement distribution and that's going to be budgeted under other contractual services. And we had discussed possibly using this in the jail, but we're not quite sure how that's all going to work out, but it is budgeted.
So before we make that decision, we'll have a presentation as to why we're going to use it all there. Would that be?
Right.
Employee wellness funds is a new fund that was created. These monies were housed in the 399. So the 399 fund was originally designed for capital purchases. So I'm not sure how employee wellness funds got in there. So we did a reconciliation over, I think, four or five years, identified the funds that belonged to staff wellness appreciation. And we pulled that out and designated its own fund. So that's what this one is all about. Work selection fund, standard revenue and expense allocations, no significant changes. Sheriff's overtime fund, again, pretty much in line with last year. Treasurer's administration fee, standard revenue and expense allocations, no significant change.
Question about, let me just make sure it's. Why is there now money under building structures and there wasn't anything before? Now we have budgeted 45,000 and there wasn't anything?
These are policies that she takes in and specifically designated for any type of repairs or maintenance within her department. And she had identified
Okay.
a building cost that she wanted to address this year.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
GRT match fund, or grant match fund, excuse me. This is a transfer from the general fund in the amount of 2.5 million. That excess cash that we had spoke about, a portion of that was used to create this fund. And this is going to be specifically for grants and temporary loans. Just to be able to easily track them and.
Love it. That's good.
Try to pre up the general fund.
Much better.
399 capital enhancement fund, we use another 2.5 million from the general fund excess cash to fund this account. And this is going to be utilized for capital projects, capital purchases and roads.
Did it go up? Let me see. Probably. The road, we probably need more, more money than, oh, it's the capital.
These are all within that fund. But again, this one is moved and this one is, it still remains in there. Okay, EMS, again, a 3% increase for GRT. There is budgeted increases for vehicles and rising fuel costs. A transfer in of 655,248,300. This fund, its recurring revenues very support payroll and all other operational costs are supplemented by transfers. So this would probably involve greater conversation of how we can manage this better moving forward. And that would be a conversation with the fire chief and his crew and of course, the commission and county managers because it's not sustainable.
So the, Mr. Chair, the ambulances are covered typically by the capital. I mean, we get it from the legislature, right?
And that's an actual ambulance, you're saying the operation, the operation costs are not sustainable.
Right, right, right. I get that. But I was just asking the question as far as ambulances, is that money in here or is that? It wouldn't be because it's coming from another, okay. So, so it's not sustaining. Has it always been like that? Now going back to operating.
It's always hasn't been able to sustain. So the general fund is not supported. One of, one of the reasons why she had asked for the grocery receipts. So we do need the grocery receipts tax to make this work. We need all of it to make it work.
You're talking about the portion we send over to?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so our revenue is at 2.3 and our expenses, I mean, our payroll expenses exceed the revenue. So, yeah, yeah, that's going to involve a bigger conversation. LITCF. Again, this is, this was budgeted and I believe for sheriff's office and some other expenses.
The sheriff's office transfers to to the cemetery fund and schools.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and Brent, you know what I'm going to ask, along with the detailed ARPA use of those relief funds, it would be great at some point to see. Cause I know we use some of the LITCF for like the purchase of the, what will be the new sheriff's office. It'd be great to see the whole breakdown of what we've, what we've done and what we still have left. Thank you.
Okay. The rest of these are grants. And I mean, to speak about all of these grants would take hours, but it's being budgeted based on the grant agreement. So I'm not sure if you want to, you know, take the time to look at this. And we have a bit more time, but they're substantial.
Question, what is that? You as Department of Energy, what do, what do we use the money for? I'm so sorry. I don't mean to make you, I can tell you it's 11,148. I'm just curious, Brent, do you know what it's used for? It's, gosh, there's no page number. I can't give you that. Wait, isn't it? Okay, somewhere. No, I don't know. I was just curious, I don't recall ever seeing the, I know it's been there though, because you can see the prior history. Yeah, there it is. You could just, you got it. It's one down. Now go up. Yeah, it's like, see that? I was curious. It's a small amount, but I've.
Right, it looks like, it looks like Mr. Hill was just carrying this over from prior years.
If there's, if this is carried over, it's because there's a cash balance. Now, what we're seeing with the grants after reconciling the budget is we still have a lot of residual cash balances that were never used. So we're going to have to take some time to understand, does this need to be reverted? Can it be reallocated into another fund? So I wish I could provide more answers.
Because we might owe it back as well if we've not used it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So there, there are quite a few of these that just have these little residual balances hanging out that need to be cleaned up.
Got it. Okay. Cause the, the next one is that energy mineral. I think it's fairly close. New Mexico, New Mexico Energy Mineral and Natural Resources. And it looks like we are using that one, but. Yeah, it's, it's okay. I don't know what it's for. Be interested.
Okay, are there any other questions about the budget?
So the next, if there's no other questions regarding the budget, before your salary schedules or the last half. We need to include this summary sheet. And if they don't have the solid schedules.
Okay.
Some of this we've already talked about in preliminary budget when we did the 3.03. So in accordance with Taos County Personnel Policy, Section 5, the classification and compensation. Section 5 program, classification and compensation plan, the classification and compensation plan with the administration of the Human Resources Department within established guidelines, the Human Resources Department will recommend a plan and any updates to the county manager group will as appropriate recommend them to the board of county commissions. With the approval of the 24, 25 fiscal year budget, the commission acknowledges the approval and the changes indicated herein. We've changed the fleet supervisor, the office manager and the five positions. We found an error and we rectified that error for the office manager and fleet supervisor. The communications specialist, the temporary position previously was approved to assist with the short staffing. We're requesting to incorporate this temporary position and the permanent addition moving forward. And all that's already included as part of the salary schedule. On the pair of changes for fire and rescue, we're anticipating a change from municipal plant four to fire plant four. That's our fire rescue folks pulling them out and anticipated change in employee, the enhanced retiring health plan as well that's been affected. We're creating the veteran cemetery, the two positions that Emily reflected are in there. The one position, community schools that we reflected and I did not speak on the reflection of the three for the plaza position. The permit tech position that both Rosa and Wendy spoke about is included. So this is the summary that we asked which places before your salary schedules and when you approve the budget. Through resolution, we're also approving these changes as well.
Any questions on this?
The only question I have, Chair, is on that reclass, the reclassification based on revaluation of weighted criterion job. That occurred throughout the entire county, right, is? Well, because that's what it says here on this, this cover, so. Reclassification based on revaluation of weighted criterion job dis.
We're talking about.
These three, yeah.
Those rating positions.
Right, but.
There was an error that we found. And the plus actually pointed out the error and we agreed with there and the error and then then Mr. Zara Costa asked that we keep the temporary position. And then we found another error which wasn't, it wasn't weighted correctly.
Okay. I was just making sure that happened with everyone because then we're going to have those come up, you know.
I figured.
I'm making an assumption and maybe I'm speculating that.
We're not looking at every position.
Yeah, this just surfaced.
It surfaced on, on the fleet supervisor and office manager. So we agreed, we went through the weighted criteria to comp ease and said, okay, yeah, there wasn't in the right framework to confiscate that activity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I get that. I understand that. I was just wondering, you know, that, just that one. Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's, okay.
Do we have any other questions? Okay. Thank you for the presentation explanation on the budget. What was, what do you think was the biggest change in this year's budget from last year's?
Well, I think that we, we took a lot of time to carefully just evaluate our actual expenditures against last year's budget so we could come up with a more of a true and accurate budget. So getting those expenditures in line with our actuals was a really big shift. Also using our cash balances to fund the 398 Grant Match Fund and the 399 Capital Enhancement Fund. That was a big undertaking as well that I worked closely with Paula to, to make happen. Also the increase to the MIS budget and consolidating that. So those were the most significant changes that I'm able to see. And I appreciate your patience. Like, you know, I'm 10 months into this job and this budget was an enormous undertaking. So it was a collaborative effort by a lot of folks here at the county. So if I misspoke or fumbled, I appreciate Brent stepping in and, yes, but this was, this was a, this is a budget we should feel really good about.
No, there's some of us still learning about the nuts and bolts of.
Absolutely, and I'm sure I still have a lot to learn as well.
Myself here included, yeah.
But all of our budget transfers, cash balances were confirmed and verified by our treasurer. And so she's confident that this budget is a true and accurate reflection of what's going to happen in the next fiscal year.
Good team work.
Also, on the salary schedule, Gina worked hard in two or three iterations of the salary schedule, so that was work on HR's part, Gina's part. Traditionally, that's always been done through the finance department. The last couple of years, Gina is in the support of the finance department. So there's a good team effort is there as well. Gina did want me to mention that on the fleet supervisor, wasn't the certification wasn't being weighted correctly? So that was part of the error. And then on office manager position at a company we were working with, RETW, they overridden the, the salary range, the pay range. So then that wasn't done correctly. So they've been overridden and we don't know why, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Gina.
Okay, with that, are we ready for a motion to approve? And remember, we need to include in the motion the summary of changes on the salary Was that a motion?
I will make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, and that is word on the resolution, correct? Okay, so yes, I make a motion to approve resolution number 2024-33, a resolution approving.
34, the other one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
34. Oh, so we've already done the, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, we did earlier, sorry. It was separate though, we did it at a different time. Resolution number 2024-34, a resolution adopting fiscal year 2025 budget.
And including the summary changes on the, on the salary schedule?
And that is included in there. And in addition, with the summary, special changes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner, the Hill second by Commissioner Mascredenos to approve the resolution number 2024-34, resolution adopting FY 2025 budget. Were the questions discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And I guess that is it. Before adjournment, we do have the meeting with the joint, with the, the joint meeting with the town. Is that, that's going to be here?
It's going to be here next Monday at 3:00 PM. Right now, I can check up the mayor made of the, the film, Saturday film office, trying to get them scheduled to end and then to talk about TCDC and all of the non-session.
Okay.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by myself. All in favor, did I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much for this.